February twenty-sixth, Town of Atherton Council meeting. So can we start with a roll call?
Member Holland?
Here.
Councilmember Widmer?
Yeah, I'm here.
Councilmember DeGolia? Vice Mayor Lewis?
Here.
And Mayor Hawkins.
I'm here.
So do we have any public comments for things, items that are on the agenda? Do we have anybody online? Nope. Anybody in the room? Nope. Okay, so we're gonna go right into it. Item number one, provide feedback on reach code approaches to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from buildings. And I believe we have a report from George Robbins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This item is, as you mentioned, kind of an update on reach codes and next steps. With the Berkeley decision, as you know, we've got to make revisions to our adopted reach codes to remove our electrification requirements. And bring that ordinance in line with that decision. We'll bring that forward to you at a future meeting. However, the town must still meet its obligations under the Climate Action Plan targets and staffs providing the council this evening with a range of options. And to consider to do that. And the California Energy Code is part of that. And so the staff report outlines some of those options, and we have some folks here this evening from TRC and Peninsula Clean Energy. We have Taylor, 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 I said, I didn't say that twice, that is actually her name. Who will make the bulk of the presentation. My job is just to do the introduction. I've talked with each of you one-on-one about this particular item, and I think I'm gonna steal a little bit of the thunder, but it's the the goal this evening is just to provide staff with some direction. We're gonna bring back something based on whatever the council directs. The, you can focus just on new construction, and that's the Cloud Energy Commission's point system that we can use. You can tell us whether to include or not include renovations, rehabilitation, emergency type replacement stuff if you wanted to, or you could just leave that off the table, or you could just say, let's just let the state lead and we'll stick with whatever they're mandating, and that's what we'll have our community do. So it's pretty much up to the council, but this presentation gives you some of those options. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Taylor, and I will give her my microphone.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I am Taylor Taylor. As George mentioned, I am from TRC, and thank you so much for taking the time to hear about our options today. Yeah, we can skip past that one. George covered what we're all gonna be covering today. What I want to start with today is kind of a grounding in Atherton's building electrification journey. So in November of two thousand and twenty-two, Atherton adopted an all-electric new building reach code, and that was through ordinance six fifty-six. Shortly after that, in April of two thousand and twenty-three, the California Restaurant Association, the city of Berkeley, ruling said that the Berkeley ordinance requiring an all-electric building was preempted by the Federal Energy Policy and Conservation Act, otherwise known as EPC. After that, Atherton suspended their enforcement of the all-electric new building requirement. And moving forward into October of last year, Atherton updated their town's climate action plan. That plan outlined strategies to encourage building electrification and reduce energy use through a variety of strategies, including policy, education, and incentive. And that leads us into last month. So last month, there was a Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals decision to have the Berkeley case reheard by the full panel of Ninth Circuit Court judges, sorry, declined to have that case reheard. And what that means is many jurisdictions are removing enforcement of the all-electric buildings and looking for other options and other ways to move forward, you all included. I also want to set the stage for some of the Bay Area and state upcoming electrification changes. So looking out several years from today, in two thousand and twenty-six, we're looking at a California State Energy Code update. In two thousand and twenty-seven, we're looking at a BACMED, which is a Bay Area, Bay Area Air Quality Management District. They're looking at a low NOx water heater requirement. Further out than that, they're looking at a low NOx space heater requirement, which means no gas furnaces are sold in the Bay Area any longer. And further out than that, we have the CARB low NOx standards with CARB being the California Air Resource Board. And that would mean that gas water heaters and space heaters are no longer sold statewide, and eventually twenty forty-five, where California would achieve the carbon neutrality. So with all that being said, why do we still need reach codes? We're looking at these policies that are several years out. So one of the biggest reasons is to send a continuous signal to the market. So there is a little bit of a gap between now and some of these future years that we're talking about, and we want to help make those changes and make it a little bit more of a ease to the community as we work through them, because they're very large changes that we're talking about over the next couple of years in terms of building electrification. We also want to avoid stranded assets and the cost of gas investment if it's no longer going to be something in the future. We also want to enable local control through reach codes. So reach codes are going to allow you to have an approach to implement cost-effective decarbonization policies and have that kind of customized exemption list and choose what you want to do now and how you want to approach that. The state and the BACMED codes are also limited in several ways. One of that is it lacks specific existing building measures, and it cannot regulate remodels or other types of triggers for cost-effective building electrification. Another reason why we could use reach codes is the local reach code influences the state itself. So statewide electrification codes actually incorporate elements of local reach codes. So by demonstrating effective ways to implement these, the state listens to that and can incorporate that into their code. And that's been seen with EV codes at the state level, which has been inspired by San Mateo's EV reach codes. And the last reason why reach codes can be a benefit is because they allow more actions sooner. It's kind of the simplest way to put it, is that greenhouse gas emissions are cumulative, and anything you can do now is going to be an exponential saving in terms of waiting to do something in the future. The other biggest reason being existing policies, existing building policies are lacking at the current state level, so doing something now there could be really beneficial as well. Okay, for an overview of reach codes at the California Building Energy Efficiency Standards and the California Green Building Standards, those are both set by the California Energy Commission and their increased energy conservation and reduced energy costs in buildings, which are adopted every three years. So that's at the state level. For a building reach code, you can increase those building code requirements above the current efficiency standards, which can be done at any time, and they must meet the CEC's cost-effectiveness standards. So that's one of the big pieces of this, is what we have to propose has to meet cost-effectiveness standards. Another couple of reasons to adopt reach codes is just getting several ahead of, several years ahead of those avoided emissions. Help prepare the community for the burden of this transition, so homeowner awareness and education, workforce development, developing those enforcement mechanisms within your town itself and preventing stranded assets. Okay, so let's get into some of the specific details of what the energy performance approach is. And you might have heard this referred to as the source energy margin before. It's the same exact policy I'm presenting today. The only difference is just the name of it. We tried to make it a little bit more intuitive. So giving you guys a summary of the approach, there's two different pathways that you can consider through the energy performance approach. On the left-hand side, you have the all-electric pathway. Through the all-electric pathway, you would be doing electric space and water heating with no additional measures required. You just have to do those two different appliances, electric. That would make you compliant with Title twenty-four, Part Six, and your reach code. On the right-hand side, you could do a mixed-fuel approach. So this is where you could have methane gas and electricity. For that, you would have gas, space, and/or water heating, and increased efficiency, solar, battery storage. Those would all be required. That would also leave you being compliant with Title twenty-four, Part Six, and the reach code. So through this pathway, we're fully allowing either kind of fuel type. One of the big differences is through the all-electric pathway, that's gonna have a dramatic GHG emissions savings. And a part of that is through Peninsula Clean Energy, or PCE, Atherton has a one-hundred percent clean power mix. So that means all electric pathways are really, really powerful here and a really good tool for reducing your GHG emissions. On the right-hand side, it's still better. We're still providing that option for mixed fuel, but you're going to just have some GHG emissions savings. So compared to the previous natural gas ban, this is a little bit weaker of a policy in order to mitigate that legal risk of being federally preemptive of EPC. So thinking about what this actually looks like for the folks who are building and looking to meet compliance with this pathway, this is an energy design ratings scorecard that someone could go through today. There are three different energy design ratings that must be met today. Those are the Source Energy, or EDR one, energy design rating, or the EDR two efficiency, or the EDR two total. So how these work today is you have a proposed design that you input, and you get a score back for that proposed design. That's then compared to the standard design, and those two numbers are subtracted from each other, which results in a compliance margin. That compliance margin has to currently meet a score of zero or higher, and if it does, that results in a pass. So this is all the current pathway for people going through the performance path today. So what's different with the energy performance approach is that instead of zeros across the board for your energy design ratings, we would be looking at one of those, which is the source energy rating, and we would be requiring a higher score than zero. So in this instance, for your climate zone, that would be requiring a nine instead of a zero. And that is really the only difference. Same pathway, it already exists. We're just changing the compliance number that you must meet. And let's talk about which appliances are regulated under the energy performance approach, because it's not everything. So what's included in this and what's included under performance modeling at the state level is space heating and cooling and water heating. So what's not included in the energy performance approach is stoves, laundry, pools, or fireplaces, or pits. So all of those things you see listed in the not included would still be allowed under the energy performance approach, even if taking that electric pathway. And then this is an adjacent topic related to electric readiness for single-family new construction homes. So first, I just wanted to review with you what already exists in the state requirements, which is most of the top half of the slide. So there's current electric readiness requirements around heat pump space heaters, heat, heat pump water heaters, electric cook cups, and electric clothes dryers. And what that electric readiness says is just that for future installation, these require dedicated wiring installed within three feet of the gas-fired appliances, as well as reserved electrical breaker space provided for the future installation of these systems and appliances. And a heat pump water heater also requires space large enough to put that equipment and plumbing for a condensate drain and hot and cold water lines. So that's everything that exists in the state code already. An opportunity area for Atherton here could be to require electric readiness for pools for new construction as well.
Okay. Yeah.
Yes, new construction. Okay, now we'll talk through a example of what this looks like in a single-family home. So this is a graphic showing a standard design building. It would have rooftop solar panels, a gas furnace, building envelope measures, LED lighting, and a heat pump water heater. Example number one shows a way to comply with the energy performance approach, and that would be by changing out that gas furnace and changing it into a heat pump. So then you would have a heat pump HVAC unit, a heat pump water heater, and you would be meeting the requirements of the energy performance approach. Now we'll set it back to the standard design building, and we'll talk through the other way in which you can meet compliance with the energy performance approach while still using mixed. So in this example, instead of swapping out that gas furnace, we're going to leave the gas furnace, and we're gonna add a battery storage system. And by adding that battery storage system, we've brought the EDR one margin up high enough to meet certain compliance required, and this is going to be an effective approach to meeting the code as well. Okay, so we're done with the new construction portion, and now there's a couple of options we consider related to existing building electrification. So one of the policy approaches available for existing buildings is the time of permit reach code, and these are policies that require applicants, when they're already pulling a permit for a renovation project, to abide by certain electric-ready requirements. And these policies avoid missed opportunities to incorporate electric readiness at little additional costs. They can also help avoid retrofist costs once BACMED and CARB standards take effect. And electric readiness does not mandate a specific appliance or fuel be used. These existing building requirements would build on new construction electric readiness requirements that already exist. So here are some examples of what that all could look like for heating ventilation in air conditioning. That could include language that says, for alterations and additions that include an HVAC system, the town could require an outlet for future electric heat pumps. So keep in mind, that's not requiring a future electric heat pump. That's just requiring that the actual electrical infrastructure is there for that in the future. You could also include this language for water heaters, pools and spas. Or you could require like a two hundred and forty-volt outlet for renovation of specific areas. So if someone is already doing a kitchen or a laundry room renovation, you could require in that situation that they include the electric readiness of including a two hundred and forty-volt outlet. You could also have this electric readiness for a panel itself. So when someone is planning an electric panel replacement in the electric panel upgrade, the town could require that they make sure in the process of doing that that the capacity and breaker space for the future electrification of the building system is in place. So that would avoid someone going through a costly and potentially time length of implementing their panel, and a couple of years later, as different rulings come down at the state level or local level, having to potentially upgrade it again. This would be a way to try and future-proof that. And there's one more point on the last slide, which is actually related to exemptions. So if any of these different electric readiness requirements would push a project over the edge and kind of cause it to require an electric panel upgrade, we could craft an exemption for that that just says, if by doing any of these, that is a requirement, you aren't required to do that. So if someone is already upgrading their panel service, then yes, they should. But if not, we wouldn't make that. We don't have to make that something they do.
I think all the pool pumps are electric. There's not a gas. I think it's a heater.
Yeah, it's for the heaters. That should be for the heaters. That's correct.
I have another question. Is there a reason why we're not including fireplaces in the electric readiness category?
No, we could include that, I believe. Well, in the electric ready, oh, yeah, yeah.
All right, I have questions, boy. Since we're asking questions. We've already required that in new construction, that they put in the Type II charger in every garage. So whether I have an electric car or not, they have to put one in, because eventually they might have one. How many points do you get for that?
The building and the electric vehicle codes are entirely separate, so there would not be a credit for anything related to the electrical vehicle in the building.
Okay, and earlier you pointed out that there was the Berkeley ruling and that there was an attempt to rehear that, but that the nine panel judges decided not to hear it, if I remember what you said. And so why do we have it in our in our timeline that we're going to eliminate gas? If it's already been ruled that we can't do that.
That's at the state level.
Excuse me?
That would be at the state level.
Well, I thought it was a federal judge that said that you couldn't do it, so I don't think the state has much to say about that. The state can override the state laws, but they can't override federal laws. I'm not looking at any section. I was looking at, it's on page fourteen. It's the timeline that goes from twenty-six out to forty-five, and it says we're eliminating gas.
And that's the state saying they can't be sold.
Yeah, or the local air quality management districts. They do have the ability to regulate what is sold. Well, it's, some of it is proposed right now. But that is based on the Bay Area being in a non-attainment zone for our ozone pollution, which is also coming from a federal act, which would be the Clean Air Act.
All of these items that you listed in that chart are actual laws that are already passed. Is that correct?
Some of them are proposed.
Oh, proposed, so they're not guaranteed.
All right, then also you indicated that, you know, where economically feasible, these things would be recommended. However, right now, it's not economically feasible to replace everything electronic, electrically. And, and the cost of electricity would, actually with the, especially with the increase that we just had, and an increase that's further coming, that's been announced, is it really economically feasible?
So based on the metric that the state of California looks at, yes, they are cost-effective. That is based on our two thousand and twenty-two Single Family Cost-Effectiveness Studies, and a portion of that is related to a cheaper initial cost of construction for all-electric buildings as compared to mixed-fuel buildings.
Well, we've heard from, we've heard from.
Did you finish your thing? Usually you finish your whole thing, and then I ask.
Well, yeah, but everybody else started asking questions, so I figured.
Would you feel better finishing your presentation than opening to questions, or?
We could. It's very short to finish it, so maybe that's a good idea. It is just a little bit. So this is a very similar slide to that last one we looked at, and it is showing you the San Mateo ordinance related to electric readiness with some slight alteration, what this could look like for Atherton instead. And it just goes through for those existing one and two-family buildings, what that language could look like. So for example, for including space heating appliances, that would look like having a two hundred and forty-volt, thirty-amp circuit and receptacle within six feet of the appliance location. And then this just lists out that similar language depending on the different electric readiness requirement for several different areas throughout the slide. Okay, so this is going to lead us into the last slide, which is your menu of options that you can consider for new buildings and for existing buildings. For new buildings, you could consider adopting the energy performance approach, which would be mixed-fuel buildings, where you would have to include increased efficiency, solar, and battery storage in order to pass that performance modeling. Or for an all-electric building, that would pass modeling with the code minimums and a market baseline heat pump water heater. For new buildings, you could also include electric readiness requirements for new construction, where they're not already required by the state. So that would primarily be for pools, if that's of interest to you. And on the existing building side, you could adopt electric readiness requirements for remodels, additions, renovations, and/or equipment replacements. So that could be for pools, laundry rooms, kitchens, HVAC, water heating, or if you're already upgrading it, that panel capacity for future electrification.
Move into questions. You have Taylor here, but you also have online.
Farhad Farahmand, also from TRC, who's gonna be available to answer any technical questions you have. And we may have some members from Peninsula Clean Energy online as well who could answer questions.
Okay, so back to my question. So we've had residents that have come, especially when we said we were going to ban anything other than electric appliances in an ADU. They've come back and presented to us that it's more expensive by a lot to do that. So, you know, to say it's more cost-effective, I just don't see that. I think that that's a debatable thing. Now, whether or not it's a smart thing to do to, you know, to move in the direction, for example, with plug-compatible for brand-new buildings, I think that that's a smart move, but I don't think that, you know, saying, well, it's all gonna be cheaper, don't worry about it. I think the residents will come back and have exception to that. So I don't know what analysis there was, there was in, in saying that it's cheaper, because I haven't seen anything that says that. And PCE has come and said that PG&E guaranteed that it was gonna be more reliable, but just this year, we've had a number of outages, so it's not more reliable. The grid is not reliable yet. But anyway, so if you could, perhaps, you know, in the future, when we look at this thing for for finalization, if you could get us some calculations that show how it's cheaper with today's rates and, and the cost of the equipment, that would be very, very helpful for us to be able to go back to the residents and, and show them that it is actually cheaper. Because right now, they've shown us that in their analysis and in their searching for different pieces of equipment and running the power lines, et cetera, it's more expensive.
We would be happy to provide cost-effectiveness data when we come back to you guys.
Yeah, okay, some, updated, not, not what we've been seeing over the last three years.
I have a question. You gave the example of batteries as one way to show increased efficiency. Are there other ways beyond adding batteries to your house?
Farhad, could you answer that question?
Good afternoon, Town Council. Thank you so much for entertaining this item. My name is Farhad. I'm with TRC. The policy is designed so that the amount of greenhouse gas emissions that are saved are at the same level as that of an all-electric building. And frankly, when you use gas appliances, the only way you can start approaching that same level of emission savings is by installing a battery. That's why this policy sets the threshold at a level where that battery is gonna be essentially, it's gonna be the easiest way to get there. You can pile on a bunch of different efficiency measures and do your best to get there, but you'll probably be spending a similar amount as that battery.
Do you mean a battery with solar or just a battery storage?
With, I'll have to go back and look at the notes, but solar is already gonna be on the roof per the state code requirement, so it may be a couple of extra panels, but.
I have a question about that, because in Atherton, if you have a wood roof, or if you have a slate roof, well, then that means you're limiting their ability to use those building materials. Hiring that a solar panel be put on, then you're requiring that they can't have a wood roof and they can't have a slate roof.
The solar component of this local proposal is very minimal. It is large, on the solar PV side, it may be a couple of extra panels on top of what you're already installing. I can go back and look at that right now, but the core component are the efficiency measures and the battery.
So if you had just the battery without the solar, so that you could fill your battery off just the grid, would that allow it? Because I'm just trying to understand if we're saying to people, you can no longer build houses with these roof types, which is a bigger ask than just saying, add a Tesla battery. To me, that's a.
Solar's part of the state.
So they may not meet the state code. If they, if they don't install solar, they'll have to come up with an alternative compliance approach. And whatever way they're choosing to comply with that, again, that'll probably be a lot more efficiency measures or electrification if they're not installing solar. But that's a state code compliance issue, not this local, not proposal.
So is the state using this approach as well with all the different choices, the trade-off choice approach?
The proposal for the energy performance approach is what is in the express terms for the 2025 standards at the state level.
I thought the state had mandated solar for every new construction.
Did they mandate, or is it solar readiness?
Technically, it's a prescriptive requirement. It's very hard to trade off. It, it becomes essentially mandatory because of how much energy benefit it has. But it's technically voluntary. You can't trade it off.
I'd be curious how, without the solar panel, if you just have the batteries, if you're able to get, you know, fifty percent there, you know, what percentage are you gaining?
And I think, I'm sorry, I, maybe I missed your answer to my question. What beyond batteries are things that people can do to increase their building efficiency? Batteries are expensive. I'm all about it, but there should be, I'm wondering if there's other things.
That's correct. Just for reference, the battery that was simulated in, in these cost-effectiveness studies is between a five-to-ten kilowatt-hour battery, and the cost is roughly around $1,000 per kilowatt-hour. At least, that's what was assumed in the study. The efficiency measures that could be included, but, you know, again, this is, these need to be analyzed by an energy consultant or a cost-effect, you know, like a more robust study. But things like triple-pane windows, extremely high-efficiency appliances,
Insulation.
Extremely high insulation in your roof and your walls, compact hot-water design. You know, there's a variety of non-preemptive, non-federally-regulated efficiency approaches. And we can follow up offline with you, but with any certainty, we'll need some sort of detailed modeling effort to, to provide a more specific answer to, to your question, council member.
Is that something PCE is working on, or you guys are working on, or not the town of Atherton working on?
We can, we can look into that request, and I'm sure that we can come up with a, a better answer for you by the time this comes back to council. It looks like Blake has raised his hand from Peninsula Clean Energy.
Yes, hi. My name is Blake Kershaw, Building Electrification Programs Manager for Peninsula Clean Energy. It won't allow me to turn on my video, so you'll have to listen to my voice. Yes, we will look into those other options before the next meeting. Farhad is a consultant, so we work together on this. We'll, we'll come up with another list of the types of efficiency measures that could be leveraged instead of a battery.
So, yeah, for me, it's a little complicated, because we're, if you limit it to a few things, like whether you have solar or battery, that's it. But if you're starting to talk about all the other energy things, and it's got to be modeled, I assume you're talking about a computerized model to feed in all the features that you've put in your house. Who does that, and how do we enforce that?
I, I can answer that. So an energy modeler can be paid to do it for a single-family home. This is very common and almost always happens on all commercial projects. I've run those models. The software is administered by the state, and it kicks out a form for the permit desk that says that it complies. So there's definitely an easy path to enforcement. It's complicated, because there's so many things you can do to lead a window on a west wall and instead put that window on a north wall, orient your roof a little bit different. There's just such a long variety of measures that it's hard to just list every one.
And does it all, does it give, so the whole issue here is getting points on this ERDI system. And do you get more points if you have more solar panels? And do you get more points if you have a larger battery? Or are there limits to those?
There are limits, but you do get more points for both of those things. Also, you get more points for, as Farhad had mentioned, better glass, better, more, more efficient glazing. There's basically dozens to hundreds of data points in these models, and there's trade-offs for each one that California's been using this energy modeling approach as an option for as long as I've been practicing, which is since 2006 in the state. So they basically, they're trying to, they're trying to create efficient buildings while allowing flexibility. And there are just many, many trade-offs that are allowed.
Every new construction project requires a, I don't, one, four, four? That kind of talks about that chance.
So you already get that analysis done now. Does it give you feedback? So if I'm building a house, and they'll say, "Oh, well, if you added film on your windows or you did X, Y, and Z, you'd meet," is it that interactive, that it could pop out suggestions, or no?
At the homeowner's side, the designer's side.
To the designer. I assume I'm working with a professional, and they're going to modify my, give me concrete recommendations to get to the nine.
Yeah, that's frequently what those professionals would do, is present the different options to the developer based on the modeling.
So, but the issue for us is there's this black box point system that you say there's hundreds of different things that give you points. And we're, it's being suggested to us that we modify the requirement to increase it by nine points. And I have absolutely no perspective. How many solar panels is nine points? I don't know what it means. How, 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 I mean, if you glaze more windows, how many, you know? It's not something that I have any understanding.
Hard to get, where'd the nine points come from, instead of zero?
It's in the report.
Well, it's in the report.
Yeah.
Come on, I read the report, of course, but, I mean, it just seems like-
What's the basis of the nine point?
Yeah.
Yeah, the nine comes from-
Eight points, or ten?
That comes from the cost-effectiveness studies. So it was evaluated for your specific climate zone, based on these different packages that are put together. So looking at an all-electric baseline versus the different mixed-fuel packages, so including a battery, not including a battery. And we were looking at a limit that compromised between something that allowed both all-electric and mixed-fuel while still advancing decarbonization goals. So we had to create cost-effective pathways for both all-electric and mixed-fuel. And the number nine was what came back, based on the modeling as being the correct number to enable that.
And every two-forty-volt plug, that counts as part of a point?
The electric readiness component is separate from the modeling.
Well, I thought your presentation said that you could do just electric readiness and qualify.
Yeah, the electric readiness is separate from the energy performance approach.
So you're saying if, if according to this report, you put in electric readiness, but you still have a gas thing, you don't get any points?
That's correct, because if you put in the outlet for electric readiness, but you're not using it, that's not related to any savings, which would be what the source energy margin comes back to.
So, so just to be clear, if I understand it, I, I think we should focus on it. There are basically two issues that are being suggested. One is that we increase the number of required ERDI points by nine points, and that is something that's assessed through this black box model when somebody's designing a system. And based on different efficiency items, or panels, or batteries, or, or different types of appliances, you come back with different numbers, and it's being suggested that we increase that in order to make the result more electric. And the second is that there's a, an electric preparedness requirement that currently the state has a requirement that certain things be, I, I'm not exactly sure what the, so that's a separate area. But there's an area of this electric readiness that's being suggested as a reach code, right? That goes beyond what the state CEC requires.
That's correct. And on the electric readiness piece, for new construction, we would just be looking at adding pools. But most of the electric readiness is related to existing buildings, which is a distinction.
I have a clarifying question. So the, the point system only applies to new construction, right? Or are we considering it for renovations?
Only for new construction.
So then, but the electric readiness, we are considering it for both existing buildings and new constructions?
No, new construction, I think the state already requires it, except for pools.
And fireplaces.
Right, you could add a couple of things.
And so-
Do they require laundry, too? So laundry is required, too?
The only two things that they-
Everything's going to get pushed.
So on, on remodel, so you're requiring, you're suggesting that we have a requirement that you have to get up to nine points above EDR one for remodeling, for example, a bathroom. That doesn't make any sense.
Right, and it's only-
To me, like, it, it would, these would apply towards all-new construction or to, like, somebody knocks down all walls but one, and then they build a new house, but they call it a remodel.
Yeah, so the EDR one, that is just for new construction, not for existing buildings.
And that makes a lot of sense, because people can put those things in or make them plug-compatible and do some other things, as long as it's cost-effective. Plus, as I understand it, you know, other than the slate roofs, that's an issue. You brought up a great issue, Madam Mayor, but, you know, the way I read the, the law is that all-new construction had to have solar panels. Now, whether or not they were on the roof, or they were on a garage, or you have a carport, you know, I don't know, but they had to have-
Is, is that accurate?
Solar-ready.
Solar-ready.
Solar-ready, yeah. But I just want to say something, excuse me, if I may, about solar panels. When I was building my house back in 2006, I asked solar panels. I had it all evaluated, and with all the trees and everything around, I was not eligible for, I mean, it was just not something that any solar company wanted to do. Yeah, that was almost twenty years ago now, but, so maybe, would that still be true? Yeah, I mean, actually, I have more trees now, because I planted a whole bunch of trees at my house. So how can the state mandate something like that, when you can't really put solar panels on and have them be effective?
Right, and they, and solar companies won't put one on unless they can put eight or more panels on there.
Well, I was ready to put as many as-
Yeah, I know, but even if you, if you have tree coverage, but you have a small sliver, and you say, "Well, I could probably take four panels." They say, "No, we don't, we're not interested."
Did you say solar-ready as opposed to not requiring solar panels? Well, that's, solar, that's a big difference.
We're solar-ready.
Here?
Yeah, here we are.
Soon be solar.
And we're going to soon be solar.
I have a question. So in the example code language that you provided from San Mateo, it includes, in, in the electric readiness provisions, that there be a two-hundred-and-forty-volt outlet and thirty-amp circuit within six feet for, for water heaters, space heaters, and laundry, and a two-hundred-and-forty-volt wiring and fifty-amp circuit for kitchen. Is that state law?
Farhad, could you verify if that's state law?
Was that a, a particular appliance, or you wanted me to check all of those appliances, council member?
No, it, it's, it's the language that you provided from San Mateo County's ordinance. And, and they, and I don't know what the state says. Does the state say you have to have it electric-ready so that it can support an all-electric appliance? Or does the state explicitly require you to have a certain amperage and voltage?
Good question.
It's the latter. They specifically require a particular voltage and amperage. And they, and yes, the San Mateo policy does align with the state requirements.
Mona, can I-
And I, I mean, I guess, I don't know, are we doing comments?
Well, I saw some questions. Is that okay? Mona, I'd like you to explain the, how they got away with the Berkeley thing, because it's around not having piping. So where I'm going with my thought process is, because I did read, George reminded me that you had given us a detailed review before, which I did read, and I still don't understand it. And I know that some jurisdictions are saying that the rule only applies if it's on a direct ordinance and not if it's in building code, so there's still a lot of disagreement about understanding what that means. And so, one, I'd like to understand specifically how they won that argument. And two, how do we make sure that anything we're proposing now is not going to be affected by that? Because the last thing we want to do is be the one that gets sued on the next step. And the, and, yeah, so why don't we start with that, and then I have a few more.
Sure. So, first of all, even though the Ninth Circuit did not agree to rehear the Berkeley decision, they did actually issue an amended opinion on January second of this year. And that amended opinion is a little bit less harsh than the original decision and clarifies a couple of things that I think would enable us to move forward with this menu of options approach. First of all, the clarification was that the Berkeley case, which actually Atherton followed suit as well, was an amendment to the building code that essentially banned the ability to use gas appliances in exchange for the use of electric. Here, what staff is recommending for your consideration is if you mandate a policy that requires electrification-ready, that's not the same as mandating the actual use of electrification. Then the builder gets to make a decision as to what they want to do to reach certain GHG emission targets that they have to do. And that's, again, different than saying you are not allowed to construct a new housing project or rebuild or do a remodel, and you cannot use any type of gas piping. And so, based on that amended opinion, my recommendation would be as follows. The menu of options approach that doesn't require a homeowner to go down a, a specific path that gives them options to achieve the ultimate goal, which is the reduction in GHG emissions, and not placing whatever amendment or policy that we do in the building code, but placing it in either health and safety or zoning code as kind of the constitutional police powers that the town as a municipality has would protect us from exposure to liability, and I think would conform even with the Berkeley decision.
You said not putting it in the building code or the zoning code. Is that what you just said?
The only zoning, I would be, I would feel comfortable, I would recommend against putting it in the building code.
Okay.
But you'd put it in the health and safety code.
Or the zoning.
Right, either, either health and safety, because we're trying to control and, you know, clarify air quality or the zoning code as a land use limitation.
No, you said building, you meant zoning.
I'm sorry, yes to zoning, yes to health and safety, no to building.
Would you put it in both areas?
I don't think it's necessary. We can certainly cross-reference each one, though.
It sounded like a key part of it is that they were upholding the federal's right to enforce this stuff as opposed to state and local. And are we getting, are we able to get around that with what you're saying right now? Because we're still local or state. We're not federal, so.
Right, so under federal law, the ability for gas usage was preempted, meaning the federal government had already enacted regulations that made that an option for any user. So we couldn't take that right away from anyone. And we're not going to be taking that right from anyone in doing this, because we're giving them options to achieve a reduction in GHGs.
And do we know of any other cities that have already implemented some of these? And how many, and where, and how have they fared?
Yes, so far, we've had San Luis Obispo and Santa Cruz. And Farhad, is there one more? I'm forgetting who've implemented this.
San Jose.
San Jose as well.
That's progressive of them.
Wait, what about, what are those I didn't understand?
They have implemented the- They have implemented the, um, energy performance approach for new buildings.
Based on this, uh, E R D I numbers?
Yes, it will change for climate zone, um, but I believe Santa Cruz was also climate zone three, which is what Atherton is, so they would have a very similar policy.
And so far, nobody's stepped up to question.
Is, I have a question, is most of the, um, county the same zone, whatever three, where our number would be nine?
Yes, that's correct.
Is most of the Bay Area a nine?
Um. I believe it's between six and nine, depending on if it's climate zone three or four. But it's similar, it's close.
So maybe like Sonoma is a different zone, because they get hotter than we are.
Right.
So I, same, I don't wanna hog the mic here, uh, being able, getting back to the idea of being cost effective. And we have to prove that. And when you look at even something like adding the electrical panels. That's very expensive. How do we justify that? I don't remember that being in the cost analysis, the cost analysis, maybe I didn't understand it. Because we did get in the past, the full study where they were looking at homes and they did the whole thing. So, maybe I didn't understand it, but it was kind of looking at the technology, not necessarily what we're talking about here, which is individual trade-offs and things, so.
Yeah, the cost effectiveness studies look at a couple of different metrics, one of them is the incremental cost of construction, so that would be the upfront costs. And then there's two different numbers that they look at, one is an on-bill cost effectiveness, so that's modeled out like over time. And the other would be a T D V, which is time-dependent variable, and that's also looked at over time, and that is the one that the state of California. Um, primarily uses as their metric.
So, and, and is that looked at separately for if you're doing a remodel? Cause clearly, if you're doing a house from scratch, it's gonna be more cost-effective to do some of this, although I do have a very specific question that a resident asked me. Which was, they were making the argument that to run a gas line is one, is like one-third the cost of running electric line. Is that actually true?
Farhad, would you be able to speak to that point?
That's what I heard too, so just today.
No, there's a difference between putting in the infrastructure and the operating costs.
Yeah, if you run it from the house, it's cheaper.
To do which? So that's, that's the question I'm asking, someone said.
With the gas. To run it to a pool house or running it to an A D U in the backyard.
So it's cheaper to run a gas line to an A D U than?
From, from an existing gas structure.
I, I would, uh, that does sound right to me, what you're comparing is a PVC pipe to a conduit with, you know, copper cabling inside, so from a material standpoint. The gas line is gonna be less expensive, however, the majority of the cost is in the trench. You're running electric, electricity already to your A D U, you can't have an A D U without electricity, so. And it's very, very likely that the gauge of that wire is going to remain the same, might be bumped up to the next wire gauge. Um, but unlikely, so it's really a zero-dollar incremental cost if you consider the fact that you're sending electricity already.
Yeah, and then when you look at the over time.
You may remember that we had our neighbor here, when we passed, and we were pushing the A D U. He came in here and he had already done the analysis, and he said we were adding a substantial amount of cost.
All right, well, the, the question is, do we agree the expert on the, on the screen or what an individual said?
One with the quotes.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with somebody who has the quotes as opposed to somebody, you know, cause we've. You know, we've had a lot of presentations from P C E, and I can understand why they wanna push this, and I think some of it's good, you know. However, um, I'm not sure it's cost-effective today to do everything, to do everything, not, not some of the stuff. I think it's terrific to say, okay, it's a smart thing, especially with the unreliable grid. To ask people with new construction to put in a battery, it's, you know, we already covered the, the need for, uh. Uh, uh, solar panels, I think it's right thing to have everything plug compatible. And so, and so on and so forth, um, I think today, the average home has an electric dryer, not a gas dryer. Although there are some, like George has a gas dryer, he told us last time.
George, it's nice.
And, uh, so there are some things that are just smart to do at the time you're doing construction. Whether or not you do those with a remodel. You know, especially if it's just a piecemeal remodel, I, I'm not so sure, and I, I don't believe that it would be cost-effective. And I, you know, I think that if somebody's doing something like that. It's, uh, it's difficult to hit them with an additional amount of cost. That's my two cents.
Mr. Counsel finishes with questions, don't forget that all the comments.
Absolutely, okay, does anybody, we're, we're still a question, so does anybody have any more questions? Okay, do we have any public comments? Or questions?
Actually, I have a question.
All right, go.
It's a half-formed question. Um. Has the state or P C E or anyone done any, like, future analysis around, there's so much innovation happening with these appliances, so I'm, I'm. The two hundred and forty volt, I have a water heater for my A D U that's on a regular outlet, because it's, so I'm just wondering. About the two hundred and forty volt, that, I thought Rick was a great question, that this is a big, very specific, and I'm not sure that it is merited based on the way the technology is advancing so quickly. There's induction stoves that can be plugged into a regular outlet, there's water heaters, there's all sorts of things that aren't requiring so much voltage. Um, so that part is making me a little nervous, and I'm wondering, I totally get it for state law. Electric readiness for new appliances, but when we're looking at existing, and now I'm entering into. Opinion, but with, I'm just wondering, like, has anyone done any analysis around all of this stuff, cause that part gets.
Cause you're up for the new panel.
Right, cause there's a lot of solutions to avoid panel upgrades.
Farhad, if you'd like to speak to that one, go ahead.
Yes, I love this question, uh, thank you so much, council member. Um, there is innovation happening every day, it is absolutely, uh, imperative that we avoid over-installing infrastructure where we can avoid it. Um, so. To your question on the water heaters, for example, yes, they're a hundred and twenty volt heat pump water heaters that can plug in. Um, and they can work very well, the, uh, challenges with them is their. Uh, how quickly they can recharge their heat, it takes them a little bit longer. And, uh, their overall efficiency, they are very efficient, still much more efficient than a gas water heater. Um, however, because of their design, they tend to not be a little less efficient than a two forty volt water heater. Now, if you're balancing that with avoiding a service upgrade. Then, uh, you know, I think that's, that's an easy decision that you have a hundred and twenty volt heat pump water heater. The discussion in general around the existing buildings measures is that if you are renovating a space. That you, and you're, you know, opening up the walls, or it is at a, a convenient point to install that electrical infrastructure. And you can do so without increasing your service size, then you take the time to install that circuit. And when you do that, it is in a interest of amenity. To install a two forty volt circuit for these appliances, you get better amenity with these higher voltage appliances. It is possible to have a hundred and twenty volts, absolutely, but, um. We do have an exemption in there for an electrical service upgrade, you do not need to be electric ready if that's what the consequence is of that.
Thank you.
That's for remodeling. Yeah, okay, that's a smart decision.
Perhaps either Taylor or Farhad can answer this question, or even, uh, P C E representative on the phone. Um, when was the two forty requirements put into state law, building code, when did they start that process and then adopt that standard? Do you remember?
Uh, yes, the. Twenty nineteen standards had a two forty volt capable circuit for the water heater, it wasn't actually two forty volt. Um, but you had to have a two-pole breaker and an extra, uh, set of wires in for the water heater, that was in the twenty nineteen standards that took effect in, uh. Uh, oh, yeah, four years ago, five years ago, for the twenty twenty-two building code. Uh, this was the instance where they started having the specific voltage and amperage requirements for all four major appliances in the home. And, uh, that research was conducted, let's say, two or three years ago, and the code took effect, uh, just a year ago, one year ago.
Technology changes on old fashioned state law.
Yeah.
So you're taking inputs and, uh, prepared to bring something back, is that correct? George.
Yeah, do you have a question?
We're not voting on this, as it said received. So I assume that you're taking our comments and then we'll come back with something.
As long as there's consensus and direction, that's what we need.
Can I ask one last question before we go to comments? Um, and I love this, I'm like Bill, I love this stuff, but the problem is, how do you explain it? Cause it's pretty complicated, I read that chart and I like wanted to understand it, and it's really hard, and going into this idea of a black box that somehow it has to go in and. Pop out, yes, you made it, you didn't make it, it sounds very confusing of this, of the cities that you named that have actually implemented. How did they present it to the public and how do they explain it? Cause I hope they're not explaining it like this, cause this is really hard to understand, so have they developed some language and educational? Literature, or how do we explain to people what we're doing?
So far, the slide decks used for other agencies who have implemented this have been similar, there are some additional slides. Have used in that context that we didn't present today, in addition, we're currently undergoing, um, like a model code revamp as well as a slide deck revamp for P C E. So we do have some additional things that we can share, and really, we can just take that feedback and, and think about it further and see what else we can bring to you. Um, Farhad, do you have some additional comments?
Uh, yes, thank you, I, I also wanna point out that we're talking about. Both new construction and existing buildings during this meeting, that's not common, uh, for these, for council meetings in general, and it does tend to confuse items. Um, so I, you know, I wanna commend you for considering both of these items, but that does, that, you know, we have to talk, we have to be able to switch between those two trigger events, triggering events.
I was gonna suggest, when we go to comments, that we separate them, when we first talk about new construction and then talk about add-ons, and keep them actually separate, cause I think you're right, it is very confusing. But I was just wondering if there's a way to articulate this, and whether or not the kind, in, in the cities that have implemented it. What kind of public response did they have, did people complain, or was it just said that? We already have this code and now it's from zero to now it's nine, and people said, oh, okay. And then just handed that, is that how it worked, or did people wanna understand it and? You know, what it meant, because also things like. If you're doing this kind of system, in the end, if you don't really think through all the things, and all of a sudden, you may be doing something like, well, sorry, you can't do wood roofs anymore. There's like, things like that that may pop out of it if we haven't thought it all through, so it's hard to understand.
Mm-hmm, right.
So I wanna open up to comments unless, now we're gonna first talk about it for new construction.
Yeah, we can ask for public comments.
I meant our comments.
You have to ask, do public comment before our comment.
I did, I did a public comment, there wasn't any. So it's up for us now to give our comments, but I wanna limit it to new construction to start with, if that's okay.
Construction.
I'll give my comment.
Sure.
So, on new construction, we're. Uh, going into this black boxes, E R D I, I, I'd like to understand, I'd like to see some kind of a chart that. Tells you how many points you get for how many solar panels you have, how many points you get, I, I don't need a hundred different things. But the most common things we'd be concerned with, and I'd like to understand what the difference would be. If we were to require an increase by five points rather than nine points, I, I don't understand.
Would it be useful to actually have someone come in with this piece of software and demo it for us? Because I, I don't think you can get your head around it until you see it in action, really.
Well, I think if they gave us a list, it would.
So list of all the elements.
At least we'd be looking, we're being asked to make a decision about it, so I'm not just gonna make a decision. Because somebody's made, done an analysis, none of which has been exposed to us, and none of which I understand.
So are you saying you'd like to see a more detailed list of the, of the elements that are considered?
Yeah, like, how many, how many points you get if you have two solar panels, if you have. Ten solar panels, if you have twenty solar panels, if you have a battery that's five kilowatts, or a battery that's ten kilowatts, I, I don't have any judgment on it.
Pardon me, but I would think that it would depend upon the size and scope of your project, because it's all ratioed out.
I don't know if it does or not.
Well, I mean, it has to, I mean, it has to.
Doesn't have to.
The calculate, it has to.
No, it doesn't.
Because if you've got a ginormous, you know, forty thousand square foot building.
If you're saying they can't give us any analysis, then I, I'm not interested in doing anything with it.
I understand, I'm.
I think they should be able to give you a list of the elements, it's just an AI, it's a program.
Certain square footages bracketed or something.
Yeah, so we can offer that for like a prototype package, so we can outline the specific details for size and all of those.
It's just not a list. A twenty thousand square foot home.
Yeah, like an Atherton home, not a, uh, I would add to that, to. That Elizabeth pointed out, a lot of our houses can't have solar. So how does the point system work if you can't have solar because we have these beautiful heritage trees blocking our roofs, so.
Yeah, there should be some exemption there. If you can't put solar up cost-effective, why spend twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars and get nothing out of it? And say, well, I had to do it. It doesn't make any sense.
And can I?
Yeah.
Uh, I love this idea, I love that it's flexible, that it gives people the ability to choose. How they're achieving their goals, I think is very, very cool, I agree with Rick that I tactically wanna know a lot more, because I don't want. You know, just to be told, like, get a battery and you're good, or whatever, so I think. For us to explain it to the builders, to homeowners, that kind of stuff. That would be very useful, I would also, for new construction, like to add electric readiness for anywhere there's gas, so. Um, pool heaters, fireplaces. Um, that kind of stuff, cause I think at a certain point, I don't, I'm sure I'm missing something, so, um.
I have a question. I'm sorry, or finish with.
No, like, go ahead, go.
With all this electric readiness, and are we requiring in our code that any house, every new construction. Has a robust backup generator system installed? I don't think I've seen any of that in any of the.
We're allowing gas, uh, gas versions.
Fire backup generator.
No requirements for backup generators?
There isn't.
Well, I'm just saying that if it, if your house is gonna be all electric, right? And the power grid goes down, if you don't have a backup generator to generate electricity to run your essential, uh, pieces of equipment like. Sump pumps and lights and refrigeration, then, you know, you're kind of outscout, so.
I got it.
I just had that question.
Yeah, batteries.
Uh, yeah.
Battery with the battery.
I think batteries are, other than.
So battery and generator is the same kind of thing?
Yeah, well, generators you can refill, if your battery and the grid's down.
Okay, all right.
So, um, you know, I, I, I've said before, I think that it's. For new construction, it makes sense, for new construction, I, I believe, just like we said with the chart, car charger. Uh, putting a battery in every new construction, I think makes a heck of a lot of sense because of the reliability of the grid. You know, like Rick, I'd like to see more detail on how all this is calculated. Uh, I'm not convinced on remodels unless it's a, you know, ninety percent or eighty percent of the house being remodeled. Um, but if it's a small remodel, just a kitchen or whatever. Uh, I just don't, can't see adding the extra cost, yes, you could say, well, it's easy to put a plug there. However, to put the plug there, you may have to upgrade your panel. And so, that brings undue costs, uh, to somebody, so I. Uh, new construction, sure, put it in at the beginning.
We're just talking about new construction right now.
Yeah, so from new construction, uh, you know, I think that. Requiring plug-ready, I think requiring batteries, we already required certain things, and I don't think we should go back on what we've already approved, which is. You know, gas cooks, cooktops, gas, fireplaces, get, you know, gas-powered pools, you know, we already had those in. If somebody wants to change what. You know, we already had those in. If somebody wants to change what is allowed, that's okay. But I don't think that we should be requiring it since it was just less than six months ago. When we were talking about having it and what we were going to exempt.
I believe the only things we're being asked to consider for new construction is using the E R D I. Method and increasing the points beyond what is required by the state. And adding electric readiness to pools, to where pool heaters are.
Or fire.
There's, that, that's what the staff report says, so everything else is irrelevant. Other than what Stacy brought up, which is to add fireplaces, which was not recommended by staff.
Pools. Oh, no pools, pools that are.
Staff is recommending the pools. I, I, I think that.
That's for pool heaters.
Yeah, it's a pool heater.
Right.
I think that uh having electric readiness at the pool heater makes sense. You're gonna have, oh, you're gonna have electricity there for the pool pump anyway. And the pump and the heater are usually co-located, um, so it makes lots of sense to me.
I think. Plug ready or to have it mandated?
Ready.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, have it be ready. That's what's means recommended as a, as a reach code. I, I personally think that having electricity at a fireplace is. Just qualitative, the reason you have gas at a fireplace is not to sit there and watch the gas burn. Maybe some people do. I think most people have gas to start wood. Now, maybe today they can't do that because they can't have wood anymore and they have gas to watch the gas burn.
No, but you have gas, uh, uh, wood, you can insert, you know, wood.
Ceramic logs.
Ceramic logs, thank you very much. You have logs that look like wood, but.
Isn't that electricity?
Batteries.
No, it's, you're burning natural gas.
Natural gas.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Even those ones with the glass in front, with the air pump behind it, like you see at the Tahoe, those are gas.
Okay, let's say your suggestion.
So, I have a comment. I feel really uncomfortable doing any of this right now. Uh, we have a lot on our plate with the housing element and um, I think that Atherton historically. Has uh never led uh and been the leading edge uh um on any of these. Uh, energy efficient things, um, and we'll get a lot of pushback from uh Atherton residents. Who number one, um, will be in opposition to some of the things that we're passing or recommending. And number two, they won't understand it because it is not easily understood what, what is being asked of. So that's my personal opinion and it kind of goes, um, I think we should wait until. We see what the state does going forward.
One last comment. Uh, I agree with.
You promise?
Yeah, I do promise. I, I, I agree with what Elizabeth said with regards to how we've always. Treated this in the past. We've always said we recommend, but we do not mandate. So that makes a lot of sense. There are some things in here that do make sense for us to put into our code, but. I don't think that they're high cost items such as the batteries and things like that. Um, so I'm kind of in the middle, but I do agree, we can't just go mandate stuff.
Well, in my opinion is that we're not mandating as we sit here anyway. What we're saying is, are we exploring these things further? So to me, I, I agree with what Rick was saying, we should know a list of the elements. I'd like to ask if it's feasible to actually get a demonstration of the software, so we're seeing how it works, so we can understand it. I think if we did that, we would understand a little bit better. But I'm in favor of going forward to learn more about it, especially in a new construction. Now, when we talk about uh the next set of questions, I might feel differently, but for this one, I think it's worth going forward to understand it a little bit better.
Well, I think understanding it better would be a good thing because before we make recommendations to put things in motion. Um, we need to understand it because we're gonna have to explain it to our residents. And if we don't understand it, how are we gonna explain it to our residents?
Right. Well, I do also agree that the, I would add the pools to it, cause I think the pools are important one to add.
Do you heat your pool?
You.
Do I personally?
Yeah.
When I change it out, I will change it out.
When you change it out.
But I, I don't.
But you don't have it now.
I don't have it now, no.
Since it's a new construction.
If I was gonna do a new house, I would absolutely put electric everything in.
To return to the council with some more uh information around how that black box works. However, we do that, whether it's a demonstration, list, prototype project, however, we'll get that information to the council and consider. Pools, fireplaces and fire pits as part of that as well.
Yes, and also I'd like to ask for um a better understanding of how it's explained to consumers. If there are other cities and how they did it, because like I said, it is complicated. So it'd be nice to understand how it's explained.
I think you should, I think you should remember though that this is gonna be communicated to builders who are already in the weeds. So yes, consumers understanding it is important, but I think the like, super, super minutia of this point system. Is mostly gonna be handled by the builders and I assume they're used to this kind of nitty gritty craziness, so.
I, I also think though that another thing for us to discuss in this is the idea of education. And one of the things that probably the most important thing that should come out of this is that we should be educating the consumer, not just the builder, but the consumer. About why we should be doing this. And some of that didn't really come out here. There's everything from the air quality in the house, the asthma. There's a whole bunch of reasons for why we should do it. The fact that you're future-proofing your house so that they're gonna actually turn things off. That's why I was asking the question, which of those are actual laws and which ones are maybes? But if there's actual law saying by this date, if I'm building a house now, I'm building a house for thirty years. And if I'm gonna not be able to replace that gas appliance in ten years, I should know that. So a lot of what comes, trickles out regardless of what we choose, is getting how we educate people and not the builders, but the, the consumer. Cause in the end, the consumer drives it, so I as an individual building my dream house, if I'm given a good enough reason to go all electric, I might go all electric. So that, and that has to be an education and that's part of our goals here is to educate people. We do it through Earth Day and all sorts of things. So the more you can help us explain those reasons, give us posters, give us materials. You know, we have to push the needle more than one way.
So, just a final comment from me on new construction. And what I don't want to do is uh require that residents incur a significant cost. That doesn't yield any benefit.
Yep.
That, that's what I'm most concerned about. And uh, and so I'm very comfortable requiring electric ready at the pool. Because you're, you're already gonna have electricity there. You're gonna have a pump that's moving water in the pool, it's already gonna be electrified. At the fireplace, if all you need is a outlet on the wall. Basically, that somebody could plug in, plug an electric device into. I don't have any problem. I mean, I kind of went along with that because to, this is new construction. The only kind of fireplace you could build today would be either an electric little doo-doo. In, in the fireplace or a gas doo-doo. I guess you could run it over. Uh, ceramic logs and, and see the gas run. So, and, and, and it seems to me that that fireplace wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a burden. And when they're building a new house to put a, a, an outlet on the wall next to the fireplace. I mean, I probably have one next to mine. But when I think about a fire pit, I'm not so sure they're gonna have electricity at a fire pit. You know, the fire pit, you're, that, what, what, what people use fire pits for is they like the image, but they like the heat. And if it's just electric, you're not getting any heat. So I'm really not, I'm not, I, I'm not convinced we should include fire pits in that. Now, obviously, the biggest savings for people is if they don't put in the infrastructure, so they don't have natural gas at all. Just like we don't have natural gas in this whole campus here. We saved an enormous amount of money by avoiding that. But if somebody's gonna put natural gas into their house, which is gonna cost them tens of thousands of dollars in infrastructure to have. An, a, a gas fire pit. I'm, I, I think going, requiring them to be electric ready at that fire pit is gonna be a waste of money. Because are they gonna convert that gas into a little electric fire pit? So they can sit on the other side of their patio and see the little electric flames do their thing? I don't think so.
I agree with that.
They're gonna chop down the tree and burn the wood.
Well, there you go.
There you go.
That's.
Alright.
But if, if they're gonna do that, they could just.
Burn the wood. Burn gas.
It would be useful to have an analysis like what he was talking about. If you're saying to someone and you're trying to convince people to do all electric, to have it ready. A really good argument about why it's cheaper and better to go electric. That has those full arguments that are articulated, because I've just today heard from someone, oh, it costs three times more. To run an electric line to your A D U as opposed to gas, but that's only, then we start talking just about the conduit as opposed to the whole picture. So having articulated arguments that are understandable to residents of why they should do that would be useful. Does anybody have any more comments on new constructions? Should we switch over to?
Let's move on.
Okay, let's move on. So now we're gonna talk about these same ideas for.
No, no, we're going, going on to item number two now.
No, no, no.
I wanted to very quickly get.
additions, renovations and replacements.
Yes. This is where I was agreeing with what you say is that if, the scenario that I don't want to see is a senior citizen lady. Who's, yeah, her heater breaks down and now we're requiring her to put an electrical thing in that place. And so even if we're not saying, and that, the cost of putting that thing in, usually in an old house requires upgrading your panel. Which ends up being really expensive. So I was trying to ask if we could get some real world numbers to each of these items in particular. Cause I know we went through this with a rental property and it cost way, way more to upgrade the panel to do a heat pump. I wanted to do heat pump, but it was way too much and I'm worried about requiring it for people. That are especially one on a fixed income. So I think it helped me a lot to understand what the numbers are. And George was telling me that there's such a vast array that you couldn't even begin. But there's gotta be some sort of idea if we're gonna mandate something of what we're adding cost-wise to someone who's just gonna. Add a new heater, for example.
So the, the numbers will vary by property and appliance type and how long the electrical runs gotta be and all that sorts of stuff. But I, I think what I'm hearing from the council is you're reluctant on the renovation side. What many communities could do or do is they trigger it based on how much of a remodel you're doing. You know, if you're doing fifty percent of the square footage of your existing property, that's gonna trigger these requirements. Or seventy-five percent or some, some number like that, that's gonna trigger it. And then you're not gonna hit the emergency replacements and you're not gonna hit the minor bathroom remodels and things like that.
So with the emergency replacement, that the example that the mayor was giving about the elderly lady. And you know, having to upgrade because her old one went. There should be some uh subsidy maybe that the town can uh give. Or the subsidies that can be given to that uh situation, so um.
He's got those down in the bike.
Yeah.
Exists.
So.
No, for heat pumps and stuff like that.
So I mean, for those essential services, uh, and it's just not a, um, a feel-good replacement. But it's an essential service, then I think there should be some um, uh, monetary help if they really cannot afford.
But I have some things.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, I think there's kind of two different areas here. I think the panel should be separated from the rest of the house. Cause from my perspective, if you're monkeying with your panel, you should be future-proofing a fully electric house. Yep, and so that feels like a complete no-brainer to me, that if you are messing with that, you should be getting ready to electrify your house. Um, cause who wants to pay for that twice? Um, so that's one. And I think that should be separated from the outlets and all that. I think from an electric readiness perspective, you guys mentioned that there could be an exception if it requires a panel upgrade. And I think that makes a ton of sense.
Yep.
I think people should be getting electric ready, but I don't want people to have to upgrade their panel too early. So I think there's, I think that's kind of threading the needle in a nice way, that it allows people to start getting ready for that transition. Without having it be wildly cost prohibitive.
So to be, to drill down on what you're saying, are you saying that if, in the case of the old lady with her replacement heater. She could be required to put a plug in.
Yeah.
And we think that the plug's not gonna be that expensive, but not required if, if it tipped her over into having to, to mess with the whole infrastructure. For the panel.
Put the wires to the plug.
Yeah, well, then if, that's the point though, is that if putting that new plug in would then trigger a new panel upgrade, then she would be exempt. Is what they've proposed other towns do, which I think is a very good idea.
Yeah.
I think the, um. You know, that little old lady, their, her water heater is gonna die in ten years, so then this is gonna happen again, maybe when we're no longer selling these things. So I think this is a reasonable thing to ask people to do. It's not requiring them to choose what appliance they are, but it is saying, this is coming, you're already bunking around in here, put a plug so that you are ready for it. I think also, there are a huge amount of rebates that are being offered by the state, by P C E. By, I mean, that I've electrified, I have an electric pool, I have electric water heater for my A D U and my primary residence. And both of them I got rebates from P C E for, which made it much cheaper than putting in a gas. I was never gonna do gas anyways, but these exist. So I think, I hear that we had the one resident talking about their A D U experience, but. I think rebates have changed. One person's experience trying to electrify an A D U shouldn't be changing our whole policy. And I think also, A D Us are very separate from primary residences. Because primary residences have a lot more rebates available to them than A D Us. And so, there's a lot that the A D U, this A D U example, I think should not be. Held up as the best example of how costly it is to electrify.
The rebates don't apply to A Ds?
Well, Bayren doesn't, P C E does. It's like, I can get into the weeds with you on this, cause I have electrified my A D U, so.
Yeah.
Um, yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I think that there are four different things here. I think that there are, uh, what electric readiness requirements do you want to have? When you're doing a remodel, addition or renovation? That's one. What kind of electric readiness requirements do you want to have when you're just doing an appliance replacement? That's a separate thing.
I agree.
Uh, what are the requirements for that electric readiness? That's the third thing. And, um. And the fourth thing is the panel.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I'm gonna, I'll address the three other than the panel. I, I thought your conversation was good on that. I don't have anything to add to that. On, um, on the requirements for what the electric readiness should be. I absolutely do not think we should say that people have to be required to put in a two hundred and forty volt, thirty amp circuit. That may be required in state law for new construction, let it be. We can't do anything about that. There's not that state requirement when there's a renovation or an alteration. I don't think we should require it because I think it's stupid. And it's stupid because there's appliances that will work with less than a thirty amp circuit. That a hundred percent satisfy the electrification that we're trying to achieve. So maybe state law will catch up, but there's no reason for us to be ahead of state law on this issue. That's number one. Number two, I think with respect to. Uh, requiring electric readiness when there are remodels, additions or renovations. I mean, one way to go, and, and maybe we should go that way, is the direction that the city manager said, where based on a percentage. We use that for some other calculations, uh, based on a percent. Like, I, I'm, I'm, I think for some costs, if, if you're twenty-five percent, it's essentially treated like, almost like new construction. But I think for this, the key thing is, is if the remodel, addition or renovation. Requires replacement of that appliance. Then, so you're remodeling a section of the house that has a gas water heater in it. And basically you're tearing that down to the studs and you're gonna replace that with either a new gas water heater or an electric heater. I think then we should require the, the electric readiness. Uh, and I'm sure there's some gray areas that I don't fully understand, but, but I, that's, I think as a rule. If you're just remodeling a bathroom and it doesn't touch. Uh, the hot water heater that's gonna supply water to that bathroom, I wouldn't require them to electric, make that. Make that hot water heater electric ready. Um, even if they're doing twenty-five percent of the house and you know, I think if they replace the appliance or or. Yeah, I guess if they replace the appliance, then. We should.
Yeah.
Require it. So with respect to replacements. I think that's a real tricky issue because that's the one that comes up that you were referring to where you have an elderly person. I mean, P C E has a very interesting program that we've just launched this week. Which is called emergency replace water heater replacement. So one of the problems with water heater replacement. Is that most people have gas, natural gas water heaters. And when your water heater goes out, you gotta get it replaced, right? Because you want water. And if that it and and there's almost no one that can come in and make a conversion from gas to water. Overnight like you could replace a gas water heater with a gas water heater. So what P C E is doing is they are going to be providing. Those property owners with a replacement water heater for temporary use and they'll set it up and they'll make it work. And it'll be used temporarily during which time the person can do the conversion to electricity. So. So I think with replacements. I I think unless the person is is. I don't think I I guess I wouldn't require it to be electric ready. I mean, I don't know if they wanna put in a like if they do the P C E program and they wanna put in electricity, then they're gonna have to make it. They're not making it electric ready, they're making it electric.
Right.
So.
Right.
I I guess I wouldn't require it to be electric ready if it's just an appliance replacement.
How would we support?
So we don't get a gaming of the system. So. If someone is remodeling their kitchen. And they're gonna replace their cooktop as a part of that. It's a gas cooktop. They go out and buy a new appliance replacing that gas cooktop and then they remodel their kitchen. How do those two things play together?
Well, if it's small, if it's a small percentage, then it doesn't re doesn't affect it at all.
Sounds like that, I mean, if they're replacing the appliance. As part of the remodel. Then they need to make it electric ready.
Yeah, but if I buy that appliance a month prior to my remodel permit.
The. I don't think when you buy the appliance is relevant. I mean, you could buy it two years before. If you're replacing it as part of a remodel. And we have to de- define, building has to define what the remodel is.
Do you have to pull a permit? Best support that emergency program that they're doing. Is there a way we can?
Wait, different point. Let's talk about that afterwards.
Okay.
Right, can we move on? I gotta go at six.
Does anybody have any more comments then?
Does anyone have any idea what are?
On on that one, on that one, my take was what Rick said about renovations and remodels. If it's part of a renovation or a remodel that you're doing an entire space, that's gonna trigger the electrical readiness requirement. But if you're just placing the requirement, the appliance as part of an emergency or you just wanna upgrade just the appliance. No, it doesn't trigger the readiness requirement. The panel upgrade is if you're touching your panel, then you're gonna upgrade your panel. Uh, but if you are not touching your panel or your renovation doesn't trigger the panel, then you're not required to upgrade your panel.
I I think I would be careful with the panel upgrades that it isn't a service upgrade. With P G N E, there's a difference.
Right.
So.
Okay, clarify between those two things. Okay.
Is there any other feedback you want from us that would help you with what to do next?
I think I feel good.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Nice. I had a lot of very helpful context.
Yeah, last call, can we move on to the next item then?
No.
Okay. Briefing on a process to update the Atherton safety element and we have a report for Brittany.
Thank you, town planner Brittany Vendix. Anthony is gonna be bringing up slides for me in just one minute. Yes, there are printed versions in front of you. I'll try and make this relatively quick. Uh, the last time the council heard anything, I believe, relative to the safety element was back in April twenty twenty-three. Uh, and that was really relative to a a contract agreement to kick off this effort. The effort is since underway. Um, tonight what I'll do is giving an overview of the project, the project schedule. We'll start to introduce the community engagement overview, which we're effectively doing. Through a presentation that we gave to the planning commission already and then this one to the city council and some expectation for next steps. Next slide. So the consultant project team on this project is pretty large. The safety element requires a lot of specific analysis in various uh, various areas of specialties. So the county has contracted with Community Planning Collaborative, which releases as uh, which serves as the collaborative. Collaboration Project Manager and all of the other subject matter experts and technical analysis. Consultants that you see listed below report to Community Planning Collaborative. This includes Placeworks, who is doing the general planning effort. Um, Climate Resilient Communities, which leads the outreach and equity focus of this. Atlas Planning and then Nexus Planning and Research. Uh, both of these teams generally fixate on more engineering aspects. Um, for the Climate Resilient Communities C R C effort, that's gonna be focused more outside of Atherton. During the contract component of this project, Atherton decided to do its community outreach in-house. So that's something that my team and George's office will be working on. Next slide. So just briefly, what is a safety element? It is a mandatory mandatory part of the general plan, similar to the housing element. It helps identify hazards of concern and related risks to the community that effectively guide the development of the town. Uh, it also helps protect the community against natural disasters and other hazards. Within the safety element, just like you're used to seeing with the general plan, there are objectives, policies and implementation measures or actions. Next slide. So why are we updating the safety element? Uh, there's a lot of acronyms up there. The first is the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, and that was an effort. Another multi-jurisdictional effort in twenty twenty-one, which some of you may have recalled participating in. That really identi- that's um, a county-wide program that looks at hazard mitigation across the county. Because hazards really don't just affect.
Oh.
One jurisdiction. It can be more of a broader effort, especially in terms of mitigating any responses. Uh, it also ensures consistency with other general plan elements and applicable agency plans. The town has a climate climate action plan. Um, we also have an emergency operations plan that was heavily used throughout COVID. So we wanna make sure that the policies and the climate action plan and the emergency operations plan. Are all integrated into the safety element and we have one particular guiding document. And uh, to refer to for operations. Uh, the last two points are enhancing eligibility for grant funding. If there's ever any need for a specific disaster response or safety preservation. Having this element up to date enables us to to request specific funding. And then there's a set of state regulations that the document must comply with, and I'll get into that a little bit later. Next. Later, as in this next slide. So we have, we of course have a suite of state regulations that apply to this specific element. We have S B twelve forty-one, which looks at updating flood and wildfire sections. As well as identifying the responsible agencies for each of those matters. And then minimizing risks for new buildings and essential facilities. S B three seventy-nine requires a vulnerability assessment to be prepared for the safety element. Uh, this is a big component of the effort and I will touch on that further. Uh, really, it serves to develop the goals, policies and actions I mentioned earlier. Uh, to increase adaptation and resilience. Then we have S B twenty-one forty, which requires incorporating that local hazard mitigation plan. Into the safety element. It seems if you have hazards identified in one plan, you'd like to make sure they're identified in another. So this is now actually required by the state. It's not just a good idea. And then Senate Bill ninety-nine, which uh, requires the identification of evacuation constrained residential areas. And so this might be particularly um, sensitive to Atherton relative to our hillside developments and their ability to exit in the case of a fire. Next slide. So getting back to a vulnerability assessment. What is it? Um, this is an analysis of. How people and key community assets may be affected by climate change. So here we're actually starting to look specifically at climate change. It's looking at the availability of existing policies or programs to help people avoid or recover from impacts. It prioritizes the vulnerabilities that inform the resilience and adaptation policies and implementations of the safety element. And then it looks at expected local impacts of climate change. Uh, so this would be specific to town of the town of Atherton. Looking at increases intense rainfall and drought conditions, more frequent extreme heat waves. More frequent and intense regional wildfires. And then also for shoreline jurisdictions, which we aren't, uh, looking at sea level rise and increased coastal shoreline flooding. So one of the benefits of doing this as a collective group of jurisdictions is we don't have hospitals located in Atherton. So when we're considering what might happen in terms of a natural event. Where multiple individuals would need access to a hospital hospital. It benefits the town to look at that regionally. It benefits the town to think of that holistically with other jurisdictions. And so this is a strong component for why we do it collectively. Another thing that I've seen working in the North Bay, um, where one jurisdiction did not experience the fire. But it certainly experienced a wave of evacuees that needed immediate shelter, which then caused. Multiple jurisdictions jurisdictions that weren't. Under risk of the fire to in immediately. Have their emergency operations team prepared and ready to go. So just because we might not be. Particularly vulnerable to specific type of event, it doesn't mean that there aren't impacts that the town would feel. Next slide. So the project schedule, we're on the second green box there that I've identified in with a star. Um, it really after the contracts were put in place, the first step by the consultant team was to compile as much background and. Uh, much background information on the hazards as possible. That includes looking at our emergency operations plan, looking at the multi-jurisdictional local hazard mitigation plan, our existing safety element. Now they're in the stage where they're actually conducting a vulnerability assessment. They're compiling all of that data and looking at it holistically. From that, what you'll next see is a set of goals, policies and programs that are. Meeting requirements of the state, but then also recommendations from the consultant team. Um, and that would be something that would come back here. We would also share that with the public to get feedback on. Very similar to how you would otherwise run a general plan update or an element update process. Uh, after that point, the team goes back and they actually prepare the documentation. They're gonna do environmental review concurrently because even though it seems like. This is the exact same thing you would see in a secret analysis. Uh, you still have to do the secret analysis. Uh, so that really spans through May twenty twenty-five. And we have a whole year ahead of us looking looking towards this process. With ultimate state and local agency review and approval in June twenty twenty-five. Um, and I would say that. That process is very similar to what you're seeing with the housing element where once you have a set of standards, you would send it to the state and the state needs to certify it. Um, it's less contentious. So it's a little bit easier of a bar to reach. Uh, next slide. So the next steps, as I mentioned, the team is still compiling data on hazards, populations and community assets. One of the tools that they'll be providing is a G I S database for spatial data and there will be a website um, associated with that. And then they're also beginning the pre- uh, preparation of the climate vulnerability assessment. So once we have a better feel for where the consultant team is at in those processes, we'll be digging a little bit deeper in the community outreach process. I know we definitely wanna meet with adapt and get their feedback. They were really incremental in the local hazard mitigation planning. Um, but until then, we're just at this point providing an update to you, letting you know where we're at and collecting any feedback you have. In terms of areas of interest or uh, community groups you'd like us to make sure that we touch. And that's it.
Any questions? I have a couple of questions. How do we pay for this? He says multi-jurisdictional. Or is it equally split and who are the other jurisdictions?
Sure, let me bring up my list of the other jurisdictions, but I can tell you that. There was a proposal submitted that included. Uh, task by task line items for each of the steps that I mentioned above. Because we're not participating in the community outreach program, that um, fiscal responsibility was taken out. So our total is a little bit less than what the other participants have. Provided, but I think the decision there was that we were one of the more smaller jurisdictions.
Okay.
Um, and have a. Strong outreach program that's existing.
Okay, I don't need the exact numbers. I was just wondering how. So it's a thing that we're paying for collectively based on how much we're. Sharing of the overlapping because clearly your example of hostels makes sense. How detailed does it get? So for example, certain areas of our town are prone to flooding more than others. Will. Literally call out those areas within our town or is it just our town as a whole?
Um. For the for the financial question, it was a hundred and five thousand dollars.
Hundred and five thousand.
Approximately. Um. It will get detailed. They will be looking at parcel maps. They were doing, they will do analysis. Um, that considers parcel maps up to census blocks and tracks. Uh, they will take into consideration which jurisdiction each uh, hazard. Is applicable to, for example, fault lines might be in one jurisdiction, but not another. I've looked at the sea level rise maps. They don't come into Atherton. Um, but we do have potential flooding from um, or an inundation event from the reservoir that we have to consider. Where Redwood City, um, that's, I think actually it does go into Redwood City, but it's a very small portion of it. So it it'll vary, but it does get down to the property.
Awesome. Elizabeth?
Um, thank you. First of all, thank you very much for the presentation, Brittany. This is really a lot of good information and. You know, as I understand it, it is a state mandated thing that we have to do and so we're all kinda doing it. And the cities that we're working with as a collaborative effort um, is uh, saving us money in the long run. Than uh, all the other towns that are doing it differently. My question is, um, in the community safety diagram that you um, put in the packet. You have the liquefaction zones and the earthquake induced and then the Bear Gulch Dam failure, inundation and emergency evacuation. What I guess one of the hazards that we were talking about here is like fire hazard or flooding hazard. There was, there's nothing in that uh, on this map that indicates that. But um, what I find really interesting is the Bear Gulch Dam. Um. Um, failure induction is all the yellow and uh, even if you're on Walsh Road, it doesn't necessarily get you, but it all it goes.
I think that's a mistake, actually.
You think that's a mistake?
I think, I mean, I could be wrong, but based on our.
They overlap.
I think yellow is the liquefaction zone and the green is the.
The Bear Gulch.
Failure.
I've been, I, you know, that was. Yeah.
Because in the text.
Yeah.
It referred to the liquef- this is George and I discussed it.
Oh, okay.
The liquefaction zone is the area from Euclid. Going east uh, over to Stockbridge and then coming across to Montevista. And then connecting to Camino de los Arboles. So that's kind of what the yellow is.
However, but Rick, um, if you, the yellow comes directly from the Bear Gulch reservoir. It's spilling out from Bear Gulch reservoir.
Yeah, I guess you're right.
Yeah, and then it goes, it starts, so it 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 flows like to the north. And liquefaction. And liquefaction is.
If you look, liquefaction is described in great detail and it's different from this, so.
This needs to be.
Can I just jump in to clarify that what you're discussing is the existing safety element and associated map? So that's exactly what would be reviewed and updated for accuracy.
Okay.
You're right, by the way. You're right. It does come by, the yellow comes right out of the reservoir.
Yeah, well, it says that, but but yellow is Bear Gulch Dam failure inundation.
Well, we thought that they may have gotten the yellows and the greens.
All the reason more to update those packs.
Yes, yes, yes.
And you might not be able to answer this, but does the state have any protection as to how this could impact people's insurance policies? I'm just wondering, there's all these areas where they're not insurable because of wildfire risk and I'm just wondering if there's any.
So that is actually something that I've raised with consultants already. There's no specific reference to insurance liability in the actual safety element requirements of the California Government Code, as far as I'm aware. But certainly, given the disposition of the state's insurance commissioner and situation with State Farm, that is something that we're looking at. I think another element of that is that we're waiting for updates to the fire hazard maps, which we're anticipating this spring and that could change the designation for some of our properties.
Right now, fire fire insurance is just off the table. I mean, a lot of insurance companies are stopped. No matter what.
I think this is a great exercise and we're required to do it by the state. What I don't want is that all of a sudden a bunch of our residents have to pay a lot higher insurance bills because of it. So I just want to know.
So the element wouldn't cause that. The maps from other agencies that inform the element and the town's approach to disaster mitigation, that is what the insurance companies would be looking at. So if anything, this then feeds into our development strategies for housing or any other type of land use.
Okay. There's one organization that has a map where you can type in your address and it will tell you which hazards your house, I think it's some state, just local sustainability group. Well, we have a product at the end of this that's similar to that, where you can put in your address and.
So that is one thing that the consulting group is working on, is developing a map that is based on G I S, which is the geographical information system that we've become really used to in planning, where you can type in your address and it would bring up information like this.
So that will be part of this project to have something like that for our residents?
Yes, I'm not sure how long it would last if it's just up for the duration of the project. So I'll have to check on that, but I do know that that is a feature of this program.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, any public questions or comments? Any online? No, no. Any comments or we just good?
Yeah.
Thank you, that was really.
One of her many tasks that she does on a daily basis.
Okay, the last item is to file the twenty twenty-four Atherton Annual Event Activity Calendar. And we have Anthony.
All right, it's actually going to come to me since we're down to five minutes. This is purely an informational item for the council on the various annual activities and events. They're not all listed on there. There are clearly more. As the council knows, we have also participation in A D A P and various other community groups out there that staff participate in, the P D participates in. But I wanted to bring this to the council's awareness level, just so you you get to see what we're doing around town on a regular basis in addition to committee meetings, commission meetings, council meetings and other items. So it's just informational. There was some guy in my pre-agenda meetings, there was some conversation around maybe adding another community concert to the list. There's two on there. We used to have, I think, three or four. So adding another one of those and potentially adding a different type of movie. The council's certainly welcome to comment on that. But just for awareness, Anthony's going to begin including this table, the color-coded one, I believe, in your city clerk monthly report. And one of the council members wanted to know what the colors represented, so.
That's my question. What do the colors represent? George said it all looks great and he.
I assume you got the Earth Day date now, since it's a Monday.
It's possible, yes.
So is there just one big blanket budget for everything?
The police.
Comes out of various different pockets.
Eight events. The police are very active in events. No, I counted them.
I have a public. Step up to the mic, please. So they can hear you online. That's, we're recording it as well, so.
Ken Frederick and Lyndon Wood.
Halloween is there.
There's a to be determined date on there that says the scene kickoff date or something.
Cause we have a Halloween.
That date is now May ninth.
Those are two separate things.
What's that?
What I listed here is the resource day that we considered having, not the kickoff meeting. That I wouldn't consider that a town event. That's a meeting of a committee, which is not represented in this count.
Yeah, meetings aren't represented. It's events.
A meeting, this is that 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 meeting is going to be open to all senior on the ninth.
This calendar is representative of the events that the town puts on. What that group is going to do.
Okay, because.
Get together.
Because this isn't an official town item. It's not on there. Is there a saying?
The the events listed on the calendar are town.
Gotcha, okay.
Organized events, yeah.
So do we approve the budget for each of these items or is it one big blanket one else trying to?
It's it's it's, you approve a larger budget process and it includes community activities and events. They're non-event specific. If it's in a specific event that requires its own specific budget, like Earth Day, that comes back to the council by council direction. But summer concerts and other things are folded into community activities events within the administration budget. And P D also picks up some of their events in their budget.
Who picks the concerts and the movies?
We do presently, but if there's any suggestions, we're certainly open to those.
Maybe some adult movies would be nice.
That's what I told you. Well, you know, not adult adult, you know, movies that you and I would go to the theater to see plus plus.
Hooch and Hooch and who? The guys.
Comes out from the hanging chainsaws.
They should run old episodes of Columbo or Kogen.
That's that's Starky and Hutch.
Starsky and Hutch.
See, I pulled it up.
So I I'd like.
Remember it, do you Stacy? Starsky and Hutch.
I, well, they remade it and I've seen the new one.
I'd like to stress again, the, like I said to George earlier, people have always said to me, can we have more concerts? And now we're cutting it back to two. And so I really would like us to, you know, go back to three at a minimum and then be able to put another one on if we could get a sponsorship for. And I agree, we need to have some movies that it the parents would go to without the kids or possibly with the kids.
The kids at home.
Yeah, you know. But but, you know, just the cartoon ones aren't exactly attractive to many other people.
The bike's mayor had a suggestion for a movie, I think.
No, I did not. Since he was only seeing gray on the chart, I said, maybe we need Fifty Shades of Grey.
Well, that could be.
You're doubling down on your adult movies, aren't you?
Agree with what Bill said. I love.
I don't know what I'm talking about because I've never seen any of them.
Concerts were really well attended. I didn't go to any of the movies, so I don't know if they had similar attendance. But the concert that I went to was very popular, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Extremely.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for getting it done on time.